Okay, good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to the April 14th, 2021 Board of Education Meeting. The Superintendent will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call for nomination for the President of the Board of Education, please.
I'd like to nominate Irene Gish.
Second.
Opposed, abstentions? Seeing none, motion passed. D U I, Irene Gish solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and faithfully discharge the duties of President of the Board of Education according to the best of your ability.
I will.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Mr. Vincent Vizzo.
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Ingo.
Stevens and Vizzo solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York and faithfully discharge the duties of Vice President of the Board of Education according to the best of your ability.
I do.
Congratulations.
Okay, and do you want to sit? Oh. Now, we don't nominate, Ingo, we just, we do?
Yes, we don't.
We just administer the oath. Okay. Okay. To you, Ingo Germano solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the State of New York, and faithfully discharge the duties of District Clerk for the Board of Education according to the best of your ability.
I will.
Okay. Moving right along. Okay, the next item is changes to the meeting agenda. There are several. We have Item O, memorandum of agreement between Three Village Central School District and the Three Village Teachers Association COVID-19 TVTA agreement. Item S, approval of consent to join representation and engagement letter. And Item N, a memorandum of agreement between the Board of Education, the Three Village Central School District, and the Three Village Teachers Association. In addition, we've left off our student report. So I'm placing him before the budget presentation. So you will be E1 and the budget presentation will be E2. And now.
Now we're at our favorite part of the board meeting, and that is where we get to recognize our students. So it is my absolute pleasure to ask to come to the microphone Ms. Carol Nickerson and Mr. Bill Bernhardt, who are going to honor our community-based vocational students. So, thank you.
Just want to say that Mrs. Nickerson has been doing an outstanding job with this program for many, many years. We're so proud of her and all of our students that partake in this. Mrs. Nickerson.
And thank you to the board for recognizing the hard work that the students do in the program. This year, we were faced with a number of challenges not going out into the community, but we found a number of different jobs at Ward Melville High School. One of our new jobs is the 9/11 garden. The students are, actually Dylan Bub is, where's Dylan? Right here. Dylan is cleaning that garden out, and so is Chris Colfani, which is right over there. It's a difficult task because there are a lot of weeds in that garden, but they're doing a great job, and you will be getting pictures of it in the newsletter, the before and after, and they will be planting some flowers also. So we do have some different jobs that the kids are doing, and everybody is working. Okay, so I would like to present the certificates now. So when I call your name, if you would come up. Okay, is Cooper Daniels here? Cooper? Hi, Cooper. Okay. I wish Craig would get a picture, so.
Cooper, we're going to come up here for a picture, too, okay? Just stand up here, okay? Go ahead.
Okay. I want to picture. I wish Craig.
We're all going to take pictures together.
Okay, we'll take pictures.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, good. Okay, and the next one, Brooke Rocker. Brooke. And Brooke is new to the program recently when she found time in her schedule. And the same thing with Emily Rocker, twins. Anthony Resnick. Anthony is, okay. Dylan Bub. Wilson Kutch. Nick Steuben. Nick, where is he? And Dylan Kusamana. Dylan? And we have Nick Meyer. Okay, and Chris Colfani. I don't think he was here today, no. Some kids could not make it today, and Kyle could not make it. Okay, and that's it. These kids could not make it. Thank you, Kyle, for all your hard work.
So, Mr. Bernhardt, we're going to shift everyone down this way a little bit.
Everybody, come on down this way.
Yeah, we're going to, I'm going to come into your space. Fine, whatever you need to do. Okay. All right, ready? All right, and then you guys will just take one step out. There you go. Perfect. All right, ready? Can you guys hold up your certificates for us? Can you hold them like right below your chin so we can see them? Perfect. A little bit lower, so right below your chin. Okay. Gotcha. That was smart thinking. Thank you. All right, are you ready, guys? Everyone's going to look toward me. Nice big smile under those, my ass. Good. Good job. All right, so stay there for a couple more seconds.
Thank you very much again.
Thank you, Ms. Nickerson, and many thanks to our students and their parents for your contributions to our school. You make a difference. And so if the parents and students would like to leave, we will not be insulted. We know you get up early, so feel free, we'll give you a few minutes to do that. Thank you for coming this evening, and congratulations to all.
Minutes, the minutes of the March 24th meeting. Do I have a motion?
Someone.
Mr. Connors, second Mr. Vizzo. Any changes, any corrections? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Brings us to reports, our student report.
There you go. Yeah, so I missed one meeting, and Mrs. Germano is sitting over here. It's been a, it's been a year of changes all around. The students are really excited to have Mrs. Petisic and Mr. Scanlon as our keynote speakers at the next student government town hall. I will say our speakers seem to be equally as excited when they're asked to attend. Mr. Bernhardt has also been a past speaker, and Town Hall is one of our most well-attended meetings. It's a chance for students to be heard, asked direct questions, and hear things for themselves. In a large district and high school, it is nice to have these opportunities. Over to things going on in student government. The advisors were very busy verifying hours for National Honor Society and PVSA. St. Baldur's event is coming up, and student government elections have concluded and will be announced shortly. There's one piece of news that I do want to leak. Riley Meckley will be next year's student government president. She ran unopposed. She's someone that has come to these meetings frequently to present on topics that affect the student body, and she is someone that has spent hours invested in student government. I'll properly introduce all the board members soon, but I just wanted to quickly share this news. Thinking back to September, many seniors did not have their driver's license because DMV was closed and driver's ed was canceled. The senior parking lot at the beginning of the year was pretty empty. The senior social calendar was much like the parking lot. It started empty, but it is really filling up. Seniors moving on to college, we're still hearing about college admissions last week, and campuses are starting to become open for visits. Here at Ward Melville, we had a senior pep rally, prom is happening, and we are waiting on announcements from Mrs. Ariola and Mr. Bernhardt tomorrow about the senior trip and graduation, which we're all very excited about. On the minds of many with prom are, what room will I be in? Will I be at a table with my friends? Will my date be allowed to come? Will I clear the COVID test? These are not questions that ever crossed the minds of Class of 2019. On the other hand, Class of 2020 could not even have a prom. Prom will not be what we envisioned, but we will still have this milestone event. The efforts of many to make this happen while some schools still are not open is really amazing. Giant thanks to those working on the prom committee and administration. Any questions or concerns? I'd like to, I'd be happy to answer.
I would like to start by talking about state aid a little bit. There's been a lot of information in the news with the completed state budget, and there have been some large increases in state aid around, all around New York State. There was an editorial in Newsday last week with the title of "Schools Rolling in New Dough," and it talks about how it averages 13% on Long Island, and, okay, that's great. For us, though, and certain, there was a chart in Newsday also that listed all of the increases in the districts in Nassau and Suffolk County. And one of the ones right at the top of the page that really catches people's eye is a district that's getting a $45 million increase in state aid next year, plus another $41 million in federal money, known as the American Rescue Plan. And a lot of people, just in conversation, would say, well, districts are getting that much money. No. Some districts are getting that much money. It's not a discussion of whether they deserve it, or who's getting what, or that's, we're talking about Three Village. We're not getting money like that. Our increase in state aid for next year is a little over $1.8 million, which is great. We're happy with that. To put it in perspective, though, our aid from last year to this year went down by 1.6 million. So the increase that we have to next year, while we're happy about it, only puts us at $200,000 more than what our aid was last year. So we'll take it. We're happy that it's not, you know, wasn't less, but it's not something that really makes an enormous difference in our budget. The federal money that is coming next year in the form of what's known as the American Rescue Plan has some parameters around how it can be spent. All of those have not been decided on. We will know that hopefully by sometime next month, but we do know that even that, certain amounts will have to go toward certain things. Some of it will have to be used on supplemental-type items that we would normally not have, but we only would have in our schools next year because of that money. It's known as supplement, not supplant. And we know that we're not going to be, even that 1.2 million, not going to be able to spend more than 62.5% of it next year. So while we're happy to get it, not saying we're not, but it doesn't change our budget picture all that much. Which now comes to the tax cap. So as we've discussed in previous meetings, our cap, it varies from year to year and district to district based on a number of factors, and our cap for next year would be 1.37%. The proposed budget that we're putting forward tonight, asking the board to, recommending the board adopt tonight, would exceed the cap and instead would have a tax levy increase of 1.85%. And because it exceeds the cap, it would require the supermajority, meaning 60% of the voters who vote, to vote yes in order for it to pass. Now, the reason we've talked about this in some previous board meetings, too, as to why we're going above the cap, well, the cost to have our students in school five days a week this whole year since day one in September has been about $7 million more than what we would have normally had in this year had it not been for COVID. And if you've been following the news, you will see that very few, if any, districts anywhere, not just on Long Island, New York, in the US, anywhere, have been able to do that. And most of that money comes in the form of additional instructional staff, which has allowed us to reduce class size, to increase the distancing, to have six feet of distance between all of our kids in class. So when somebody does test positive, and it's been this case all along, an entire class or in other districts, you've seen other, whole schools have to quarantine for a week or two weeks or whatever. We haven't had to do that. And we want to keep that, we want to keep that up for next year, too. We don't know exactly what school is going to look like in September. We've seen in the news where the CDC and the Department of Health have said, oh, three feet distancing is good enough in schools. Well, that's, that would be okay. However, they have also still said that with that three-foot distancing, if someone tests positive and somebody's been less than six feet away from them for the 10 minutes, they'll have to quarantine. So that's great that they say three feet, but if we would still have to quarantine entire classes or entire school, that doesn't help us much. So we need to have whatever health and safety protocols in place for next year that are necessary. We don't know what they're going to be yet. Hopefully, we'll find out more in the next few months, but we need to be prepared in our budget for that. The additional $7 million that we're spending this year, almost all of that has come from our reserves. There was special legislation passed this year that allows us to use our reserves for COVID-related expenses, and we've done that. The special legislation, however, also requires that we pay that money back to our reserves over no more than a five-year period, starting next year. And that's all part of why we're going above the cap in this proposed budget. We were hopeful that in the state budget, both the Senate and Assembly had in their budget bills, it would have extended that period of time to pay back our reserves instead of five years to 10 years, and we wouldn't have had to make any payments until either year two or three. But that was not included in the final budget. So we'll have to pay that money back to our reserves in that five years. And that's, first, the start of that is accounted for in this proposed budget. So the cost, the increase in tax, school taxes next year for the average Three Village homeowner, should the budget pass, would be $222 for the year. That's the average. If we went out at that 1.37% tax cap, the increase would have been $164. The difference between the proposed budget and what a tax-cap compliant budget for the average homeowner in Three Village is $58 for the year. So Ms. Petisic will talk about the staffing changes in the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. So as many of you know, several years ago, we had reduced our health education program in the sense that we had dedicated health teachers teaching, and the program then went to our elementary school teachers to institute the health education instruction for the students. Over the years, we've built that program back up, and for next year, we are recommending full restoration of that program. It is a very robust program. It is very unique to our district, and we believe it is in the best interest of our students. So we're excited that in grades K through 6 next year, we will have dedicated health educators teaching health instruction to all of our students. At the secondary level, last year, we pulled back on some of the math labs. Those will be restored next year. And in addition, we're restoring electives across every discipline in grades 7 through 12. This will help fill in the gaps of some of the study halls that students have. We want students to be productively engaged in their instruction, and we feel it's really important, so we're excited about that as well. In addition, we will be adding a social worker at the elementary level. Currently, two of our social workers in two of our smaller schools, elementary schools, are split between some of the larger schools. This will allow all of our social workers at the elementary school to be full-time in their own elementary school, and the additional social worker will go to the larger schools to help support students at that level, as well as the remote elementary school and our out-of-district responsibilities. So we're, we know that mental health has been another issue that has definitely impacted students across the board, and we feel that this is a very good use of our monies, and I thank the Board of Education for their continued support in the area of mental health. We will also be adding a 504 elementary chairperson. This will allow us to free up our instructional support staff, who are called our instructional consultants at the elementary level, whose primary job, the job was really created to give support to our elementary teachers. And because of all of the other responsibilities with 504, they've been pulled away from those responsibilities. This will allow us to restore that. In addition, as we know, can you imagine teaching music remotely? That has been a challenge, but I have to give kudos to Anthony Polara and his staff in accomplishing that in such, in an amazing way. And part of that is the music technology piece, and really having somebody who's in charge of that and being able to actually do professional development for our other teachers as well. So that will be a position that we will be adding moving forward for next year.
We haven't heard anything that there will be a change in voting procedures next year. So as we've been discussing, the voting will be back to normal. One thing that they did announce, the state did, was that COVID, or fear of COVID, can be a valid reason for requesting an absentee ballot. But different from last year, where everybody was automatically sent an absentee ballot, now that would only be by request. Information about absentee ballots and procedures and how to get them will be posted on the district website, but other than that, voting will be back to in-person this year. And the voting will be at Ward Melville, Murphy Junior High School, and Jolinas Junior High School, except for last year, as we've been doing for the past several years. It works out well at those schools, as, in case anyone doesn't know, when somebody comes to vote, we cannot ask for ID, the door has to be unlocked. We have additional security. But those schools in particular, where the machines are, it's conducive to cordializing off that section of the building with our security. So that works well to have the voting at those three schools instead of the five elementary schools as we used to. So to summarize the budget, just overall, the dollar-to-dollar budget increase is a little over 3.8 million, which represents a 1.75% increase, and on the tax levy, it's just under $3 million, which is 1.85%. And again, because that goes, that is above the cap, it requires 60% of the voters to approve it in order for it to pass. If the budget doesn't pass on that, on May 18th, then the options are the same as other years. The board can determine that if and when that becomes the case, either to present the same budget for a revote, present a revised budget for a vote, or go straight to contingency. Going straight to contingency is the same as if a budget fails twice, and it means no increase to the tax levy from one year to the next. And that would mean a reduction of $3 million in, off of our budget of expenditures for next year. What actually gets thought would be something that would be discussed if and when that became necessary. If there is a need for a second vote, it would be on the third Tuesday of June. And that's it, unless anyone has any questions.
And we will move around to items for board discussion. Are there any items for board discussion? No. Okay. Item F. Item F, Mr. Scanlon, 2021-2022, new courses and course name change.
We have an addition to the course name change proposal we made back earlier in the year. One additional course, the public speaking course, needs to be clarified for NCAA purposes.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Visso, second. Mr. Cornwright, all in favor. Post, abstentions. Motion carries. Adoption of 2021-2022, recommended budget and property tax report card. Mr. Carlson.
The recommendation is to approve the, adopt the budget as I described. Dollar amount of it would be $222,659,523. The tax levy percent would be 1.85%. Again, that exceeds the tax cap. And if it's adopted tonight, then I would submit the property tax report card to the State Education Department tomorrow.
So move, second.
Any questions? All in favor? Post, abstentions. Motion carries. H, appointment of fiscal advisors, 2021-2022.
If you'd like, we could do H and I together, because they're similar things. One is fiscal advisor, the other is bond counsel for district bar and our tax administration.
Okay. So move, Mr. Cornwright, second. Mr. Visso. Any questions? All in favor? Post, abstentions. Okay. Now we go to acceptance of donations. Mr. Carlson.
We have one donation. It's a check in the amount of $1,000 donated by Ann and Alan Tucker to the Ward-Melville High School Scholarship Fund.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Visso, second. Who's standing here? Mr. Kermit. Any questions? All in favor? Abstentions. Against, I'll get, I will get it down. It's going to take, it's going to take a while. Okay, surplus textbooks.
Well, K is surplus equipment.
Oh, equipment. Equipment first.
Actually, we could do K and L together, if you'd like. Surplus equipment and surplus textbooks. We just have a few pieces of equipment that are in, inoperable condition from Sotorket School, and we have 23 science textbooks that are part of the old standards that we don't use anymore, also from Sotorket.
Mr. Visso, second. Dr. Kermit. Any questions? All in favor? Post, abstentions. Okay. Authorization to participate in a cooperative bid with E and I Cooperative Services. Mr. Carlson.
This is, we participate in a number of cooperative bids, just other places to look for better pricing on various goods and services that we purchase. There's no cost to participate in this one.
So move.
Dr. Kermit, second. Mr. Visso. Any questions? All in favor? Okay, good. I'm so glad. Okay. Number N, approval of memorandum of agreement between the Three Village Central School District and Three Village Teachers Association.
So move.
Mr. Visso, second. Mr. Cornwright. Any questions? All in favor? Post, abstentions. Oh, approval of agreement between, is this what we just did? Oh, it's different. Okay. Approval of agreement between Three Village Central School District and Three Village Teachers Association in regard to the COVID-19 TVTA agreement.
So move.
Dr. Kermit. Mr. Visso. Any questions? All in favor? Post, abstentions. Why am I next up? Am I right? Okay, personnel matters? Personnel matters, instructional? Do I have a motion?
So move.
Okay. Mr. Connors, Mr. Visso. All in favor? Post, abstentions. Motion carries. K, non-instructional?
So move.
Second? Okay, second. Mr. Cornwright. Okay, any? Okay, all in favor? Post, abstentions. Okay. Q, recommendation of committee on special education, subcommittee, and accommodation five or four planned meetings of the dates listed. Mr. Visso. Mr. Cornwright. Any questions? All in favor? Post, abstentions. Okay. And recommendations of a committee on preschool of special education. The meetings. Any questions? All in favor? Post, abstentions. Motion carries. Item S, approval of consent to join representation and engagement letter provided. Lewis.
So move.
Second. Okay, thank you. Any questions? All in favor? Informational items go next.
Irene, I'd like to make a statement, if I could.
Sure.
Over the years, I've been involved in numerous communities, community activities in Three Village, but none has been more fulfilling than my service on the Three Village Board of Education. It doesn't seem possible that I've served on the board for almost 21 years, from 1994 to 2006, and 2012 to 2021. My current term expires in June, and I had every intention of completing it. Regrettably, that is not possible. Since January, I've been dealing with numerous health issues that prevent me from fulfilling my role. Therefore, it is necessary for me to resign from the Board of Education effective April 17th, 2021. It has been a privilege to play a role in representing the community in maintaining and enhancing the educational opportunities for our students. Thank you very much.
Bill, you have been an incredible leader in our district, and you will be sorely missed. You have been a mentor to so many, a friend, a colleague. And we, and the Board of Education and I, along with the Cabinet, had nominated you for a SCOPA award. And unfortunately, the SCOPA award isn't going to be until the end of May. However, I'd like to take a moment to read what was written. Again, we were only allowed 150 words. I could have written 500, and everybody knows me, a lot more, but that's all I was allowed. So if you will not mind, okay. Bill Connors is a true advocate for public education and a longstanding member of the Board of Education, a dedicated educator, a dedicated educator at heart. He retired from Suffolk County Community College in 2011 after holding a variety of impressive faculty and senior administrative positions spanning 44 years. He previously served on the Board of Education from 1994 through 2006, and as president from 1996 through 2006, and vice president from 1995 to 1996. He was elected again to the Board of Education in 2012 and served as board president from 2014 through 2020. While his credentials are impressive, what truly distinguishes Bill is the pure altruism with which he has led our district. His unselfish commitment to the student, staff, and school community identify him as a most remarkable educator and board trustee, who has made an indelible and lasting impact on the Three Village Central School District. It is a privilege to nominate Bill Connors for this honorable recognition, which he will be receiving at the end of May. But tonight, we have a plaque that pretty much summarizes what I've said here, and we'd like to present it to Bill this evening.
Okay, yeah, that's a problem. All right, public participation, do I do this first?
No, we would ask first to be.
Does anyone have? This is the first, this is the only public participation. If someone wishes to address the board, we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. Okay, we have one emailed comment from, "Good evening. My name is Melinda Sealy. I'm the mom of an 11th grader and a 2020 graduate, but tonight, I'm writing you as an advocate for all of our secondary students. It is my understanding that the administration will be publishing any necessary guidelines regarding this year's Regents exams within the next week. I would like to take this time to ask you, our Board of Education, and the administration to promise us the utmost transparency with such an unprecedented situation. New York State Board of Regents understands giving Regents this year will only provide inaccurate information, as there is such an uneven playing field due to the pandemic and how it's affected our individual families so differently. It is nonsensical to ask students who have already lost so much to prepare and sit for these exams. Our eighth and ninth graders especially are the ones who could be most effective. I believe that it is the utmost importance for all of our parents to understand the many options that are available. First and foremost, to understand that the only requirement for this year is for school districts to offer the tests, if there is absolutely no requirement, state or federal, for any student to take or sit for any assessment. I implore you to change the policy of 12% of Regents scores going to a student's final grades and implement a do-no-harm policy for this year. Our students historically hold themselves to such high standards, I think it's safe to say, that performance in their classes over an entire academic year is far more a better judge of their understanding than any exam. Our teachers are bar none, some of the strongest in the state. I see no reason not to trust their grading of our students. I believe this is why New York State Board of Ed has instructed all districts to do the same. Please take the time to explain to our students and parents that if they choose to sit for any Regents exam, they can still choose to have their score listed as an E for exempt on their transcript. And perhaps more importantly, explain how Regents exams are not tied to any graduation requirements, and final class grades will be used for all students working towards an advanced and/or honors diploma. As most of our neighboring districts have done, please consider sending to parents an opt-in form for those interested in taking these exams, as they are not required. Thanks you for your time and hope you and your families are all well and in good health. Signed, Melinda Sealy. And we hope you and your family are in good health as well.
The secondary principals, along with Mr. Scanlon and myself, have met to discuss this, and actually, a letter has been prepared that will be going out this Friday that explains all of this to the families of secondary students, all secondary students. The district will answer all of those questions. We, we have prepared what we think is a very comprehensive letter, along with the FAQ document that was submitted by the State Education Department, along with our counseling staff and our secondary principals. We will be able to address all of those issues. We are not going to do, as a district, just like we did last year, anything to disadvantage our students. So with regard to the 12% policy, we will allow students who do take the Regents exams, and if it benefits a student, we will calculate it into their grade point average. If it doesn't benefit a student, we won't, because there are some students in which it does benefit them, and we want to give our students every opportunity to be successful. With regard to the opt-in, we're not really allowed to do that, so I can't speak for what other school districts are doing, but the letter that will go out to parents will explain what they would need to do if their children decide not to take the exam. And yes, students, even if they do take the Regents exams and they don't score, receive a score that they're comfortable with, in consultation with their counselor and their parents, they can make the decision to have an E for exempt, as opposed to having the score posted on their transcript and their report card. So I hope this information will be helpful to parents. I think the letter will be, clearly delineate all of this information.
Okay, that, any other public participation? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Mr. Connors. Mr. Visso. All in favor? Good night.